Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meetings in order. The time is 7:45. This is the regular council meeting for February 27. Clerk, can you please do a rule call?
Yes.
Councilwoman Aaron?
Here.
Mayor Portembliss?
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Councilor Warbach?
Here.
Councilman Solis?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grass. I'm here, thank you. The invocation and pledge for this evening will be led by Councilman Fleming. Ask you to stand if you're able, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion and give us clear minds and peaceful hearts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is he in that now? Thank you. First up, we have additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we add the inter-local agreement with Hazel Park for S1 services to the agenda. I'm not sure which place that we would like to put it. Could that go in consent agenda?
I think it actually should go under reports because I don't exactly know how much it's going to cost in the long run.
Okay, so reports six dot two or something?
Six B, I don't know. Okay, is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to add to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I believe we need to add under executive session, a closed session tonight to discuss the case sayers versus Madison Heights. I would make the motion that we add that under executive session.
All right. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll support.
A motion has been made in support. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. And are there any other additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none, we're going to move to presentations. First up, we have certificate of appreciation for Jennifer Ramirez.
Oh, it came up just in time. I've been trying to get my computer up and going, so I will point your attention to the monitors in the front and back. So, um, one more second. The city of Madison Heights wishes to give a certificate of appreciation and recognition of Jennifer Ramirez. The city of Madison Heights is fortunate to have talented artists call the city home. Whereas, one of the most recognized artists is Jennifer Ramirez, who has been a resident of Madison Heights for nearly 20 years. Whereas Jennifer Ramirez has been awarded commissions by the Madison Heights Arts Board to paint murals at Civic Center Park, Rosie's Park, and Huffman Park, which are beautiful, colorful designs with themes ranging from imagination at play to wildlife and mythical creatures. And whereas, not only does Jennifer Ramirez contribute to the community when on a paid commission, she also gives freely of her time and talent by creating public art on a regular basis and sharing her art on social media under Jennifer Ramirez Art. And whereas during COVID, Ms. Ramirez lifted up the community by beginning a tradition of creating chalk art on her fence with buried subjects, attracting attention and accolades from residents and passersby, young and old, and receiving media attention as well. Also, People Magazine. That's not in there. So whereas Jennifer Ramirez recently created amazing public art display by forming snow shark sculptures in her yard, again drawing positive attention to all who have seen it. Her snow sharks have gone viral and garnered positive media attention from her art from the city of Madison Heights with stories on M5, Channel 4 News, Channel 7 News, and a multitude of positive social media posts. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council celebrate and acknowledge Jennifer Ramirez and Jennifer Ramirez Art as one of the greatest artistic treasures of the city, and we thank her for sharing her talents with Madison Heights and the greater Metro Detroit area.
Jennifer Ramirez?
Come on down.
Well, I should have been flipping through while I was reading, but multitasking is not my strong suit, so if you look at the screens, you will see some of the beautiful art that has been created.
Your Honor?
Yes.
A while back, and I don't know the history, maybe one of the historians in our audience would be able to elaborate, but the other major artists from our city, Wieland, long ago, the city council dedicated a day on behalf of Wieland. I would like to suggest that Public Art Day, the International Artist Day, on October 25th, that we consider naming that after Jennifer Ramirez for this year. We don't, I don't think we did a motion already. Yeah, I will make that as a motion. I will make that as a motion.
Your Honor, could I support that motion?
Um, sure. Is there any discussion?
I agree.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. All right, very sorry. What date was that?
That is International Artist Day. It is October 25th.
All right, and then next up is certificate of appreciation for Michael and Holly Hader. Thank you.
City council is scheduled to give a certificate of appreciation and recognition of Michael and Holly Hader. The city of Madison Heights is fortunate to have a community of caring residents that strive to make the world a little better for those around them, and one of those households is Michael and Holly Haders. And whereas during COVID, the Haders lifted up the community by creating a skeleton family of deceased for Halloween 2020 and has creatively changed outfits and celebrated holidays since that period with annual events throughout the years. Whereas residents and visitors alike have enjoyed this creative display and look forward to each new season. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council celebrate and acknowledge Michael and Holly Hader for lifting up the community, and we thank them for creating and maintaining the skeleton of family deceased for Madison Heights enjoyment. And again, I apologize for my multitasking, but if you look at the screen, you will see the display.
So, and I just want to take a moment to comment on both of these certificates. So, the fence, I went to the fence. It was, it gave us a destination, especially during COVID. It gave us a place to go, and I loved seeing everything that you do there. That was wonderful. So, thank you. Please keep it up. Let me know if you need more chalk. All right? And for the Haders, I love going to yours as well. It was so, it was just, it was great, and people would talk about that giant skeleton. And with all the construction, being able to go by, at least you're like, oh, look at that. So, and my husband came home and kept talking about him, and I said, her name is deceased. So, thank you both for contributing, just doing what you do. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak. I ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you address your comments to me, and that you give your name, address, any affiliation with the city. Am I with that?
Vita Palazzolo, 28659, John R. I feel like every time I come up here, I have a different address. I've moved like four times in the last couple of years. I hope this is okay. Please cut me off if it's not. I volunteer for the Madison Heights Food Pantry. And with what we've just experienced in the last couple of weeks with ice storms and just today, and people still without power, but very grateful for what DTE has done. So many people have lost their food, you know, their refrigeration systems are down. So with all the spoilage of food, this Saturday is a pantry distribution day for us. And we lost power. We're located at, we're Central Church's on John R. by Restaurant Row. Not affiliated with the church, but they have been extremely wonderful partnering with us from day one when the pandemic started. And I don't believe we lost anything, but our shelves are getting low, so I am reaching out to the community. We have a number of locations to drop off non-perishable items, the City Hall being one, St. Patrick's Episcopal Church on 13 Mile, the Pharmacy Shop on Dequender, Century 21 on 12 Mile, and Central Church, right across the street from each other. So our next distribution is March 4th, and you know, just make sure that, check the expiration dates. Sometimes that just is a fluke, but we appreciate it. And we could not do this without the community and the love of our volunteers that are phenomenal, that have been out in the cold and the rain and kind of like the post department, you know? But we're grateful for the city, and we're grateful that you've allowed me to come up here and share that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Mayor Grass, my name is Kevin Wright. I live at 745 Canterbury Drive. Also, I'm a member of the board of directors of Madison Citizens United. Before I say what it's going to come up here to talk about, I want to say I have the pleasure of working at Edmondson Elementary School, so I get to see Jennifer's artwork on a daily basis. And sometimes when I'm taking a walk in the school with one of the students I work with, I'll just go to the second floor and kind of peer down at her fence. At times, just to kind of calm down. So, she does a great job for the city. Also, you know, I was thinking that when I've traveled in the past, and I say, people say, where are you from? I'll say, Madison Heights, Michigan. No one really knows where it is. If you're out of state, I'll say, you know, it's four miles north of Detroit. From now on, I'm just going to say, I come from the city with the ice sharks, and I think everyone will know.
Yes.
But I really just came up here tonight to let everyone know, you, Madam Mayor, and the residents and the city council, that we are beginning in earnest to plan this year's 2023 Madison Heights Juneteenth Celebration. It's going to be held on June 17th at Civic Center Park. We've got a phenomenal program set up. We've already confirmed that the Smoke Jones Detroit Band will be back to headline the free concerts. We're going to have food trucks. We have just a great lineup. So, we just wanted to give a, let the residents know and let you know that if people are interested in learning more, we're on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, YouTube, and also our website, MadisonHeightsJuneteenth.com, which we're updating right now, so you may want to wait a week to go on that. But just want to let you know that we're planning. We expect a great celebration. We appreciate the embrace, the way our city has embraced this holiday the last two years, and we're looking forward to growing it even more in the next future, in the future years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Howard. I do not live in the city of Madison Heights, but I serve on the board of Madison Heights Citizens United, along with Kevin and some amazing, awesome members of the community. Complete sidebar, the deceased and the shark thing, I share it with my friends in Atlanta, and we like share pictures of both those, and it's one of the great, just a great example of how awesome this city is and how awesome the residents of this city is. So, both of you guys have brought like joy, and my daughter loves skeletons, so, you know. We just wanted to acknowledge them. You know, today is the second to last day of Black History Month. Black History Month was started by a gentleman named Woodson, and the idea was actually just a week long. It was called Negro Heritage Week, and it was between, around the birthday of, I just drew a blank. No, it was, uh, uh, oh, you shook your head. I thought you knew it was. I thought you were going to, yeah, I was calling for a lifeline. One of a former slave who helped design Washington DC, just drawing a blank on his name right now. But the idea was that, that the history of African Americans, Frederick Douglass, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. But that the history of African Americans in this nation wouldn't be relegated to just a week, but that it would become an intrinsic part of our society and our education. Well, I can say, you know, unfortunately, that's not the case throughout many parts of this nation. It's actually illegal to teach even some things in certain parts of the nation about slavery, which is mind blowing, but, and even it being outlawed in some cities here in Michigan. I'll say here in Madison Heights, it's just such a pleasure to be a part of a city that embraces all people, all cultures, period. With no expectations, no qualifications, and it's just exciting to be a part of a city that does that, that has really embraced Juneteenth as a holiday and really embraced the city slogan as being a city of progress. Living not in this city, I brag on Madison Heights all the time for all the like amazing things that you guys do, from the residents to this council to the mayor and the city manager. So, I'm just glad that we can be a part of that, even though I don't live here, and just wanted to invite you guys out again for Juneteenth. And we look forward to doing some other things, events coming up soon with the Community Coalition and the HREC, and thankful that, you know, Oakland County and David Color is also coming along to support us, and so just really looking forward to it. So, I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much for everything that you guys do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close open to the public, and we're going to move to the consent agenda. There are two items. There's the DPS director, there's DPS vehicle 460 scheduled replacement, and then there's the city council regular meeting minutes from February 13th. What is the wish of council for the consent agenda? Yes.
I oppose that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have reports. We've got the city clerk, and this is the boards and commission appointments. So normally, what we do is we go through this alphabetically by board. So, the first board is the, and then the council representative makes any suggestions if they wish, and sometimes we just say we're going to leave it the way it is if we're making quorum. So, first up is the Arts Board. Mr. Bliss?
Hi. Yes, Your Honor, just a question for the clerk. One of our longtime volunteers had mentioned submitting an application, Sue Pop. I'm not seeing it on this list.
I do not have receipt of that.
Okay, then I will defer to making an appointment tonight. Did you want us to share anything about the board, or are we doing that separately?
So, no, what we have done is in the past is we have then just sort of reviewed what's happened in the last year and then what's being planned for the upcoming year, and I think usually work plans, now that we have work plans, we can use those as well.
Okay. Well, Your Honor, just as far as the Arts Board goes, a lot of work already on the next Trail Tunes and Pumpkin Walk. We have a gala coming up. We've got a couple of significant art programs, and we are working really heavily to bring a bandstand to Civic Center Park. So, lots of great work from the Arts Board.
Thank you. Protection Board of Appeals, we don't have any Crime Commission. So, this is a mayor's appointment. But Mr. Fleming, you are the council rep. Are you making quorum? Is there anything with this that you want to do?
Yeah, we could use one more to put forward because we're, I just heard that we have a resignation, another resignation clerk, so if you make an appointment, that would help us out.
Okay, did you have?
Sorry.
Can you hear me? Okay, all right. All right, was there, did you have a recommendation for who you wanted to make the appointment for?
Yeah, for, my recommendation would be Beth Scott to be appointed to the Crime Commission.
Okay, as alternate or as regular?
Regular.
As regular, all right. So then, I'm going to ask for council to go with that recommendation. Can I get a motion for council?
Your Honor, I make a motion that we appoint Beth Scott to the Crime Commission, regular seat that would end 8/31/2023.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll support concurring with the mayor's recommendation.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. All right, motion carries. All right, next up is the Downtown Development Authority. This is a mayor's appointment, and in the past, what has happened is the DDA has requested that they make a suggestion for the mayor, so we had that meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I am going to request that someone makes the following appointments. One is for Yusef Jarboe for a term ending February 2027, and the other is for Michael Van Buren, also a term ending February 2027. Can I get that motion, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add Yusef Jarboe and Michael Van Buren for a cycle, as earlier stated, to the Downtown Development Authority.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes, support. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
It also is for the Brownfield.
Uh, yes, that is also for the Brownfield. Is that okay for the maker?
Yes.
And for support?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you for that, clerk. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. And I just realized, Mr. Fleming, that we didn't do your review of the Crime Commission.
Okay, so the Crime Commission is working on several issues this year, bringing a, bringing a canine demonstration, town hall from the police department, and also cybercrime, like a seminar for cybercrime. And we have the bike rodeo that's coming up in June. So, those are some of the events we're working on right now.
All right, thank you. And for the DDA, I will just make the comment on that. I don't think we've had any Brownfield recently. But for the DDA, we're working on, we have our Second Annual Green Crawl, which is for St. Patrick's Day. This year, we have partnered with the Hazel Park Madison Heights Chamber, so we have DDA businesses. We also have a few businesses that are a little bit south of us in Hazel Park. That's March 17th for St. Patrick's Day. And then we're also working a bit on streetscaping and getting banners in the downtown, so stay tuned, and you'll see that when you're driving by. Next up, the Environmental Citizens Committee. Councilor Warbach?
Yes, I move that we appoint, or reappoint Jen Bartleman to a regular term ending in February 26, Michael Sally to a regular term ending in February 26, and Jason Theodoroff in a regular term ending in February of 26. Also Anthony Klapacki to a regular term ending in 2024. Or, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. And then Harris Veseliki, my apologies if I mispronounced, to an alternate term ending in 2026.
Sorry, Anthony is for 26, or is he for 24?
Did I?
I think they're all 26, and the alternates are 24.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misread it.
That's okay.
Harris Veseliki?
Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
All support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just as a clarification, I'm not seeing in my packet half of those names. So, was it in an addendum?
Your Honor, Jennifer, Michael, and Jason were all currently serving.
Right.
And are willing to return, and I saw them in the packet, so.
Those three I see.
They are, but.
Anthony and Harris were in the packet. That's where I got their names from.
Okay, they're not on the spreadsheet.
They're not on the spreadsheet. They're in the applications attached to our packet.
That's okay. It's a very, we need to clean up this one. It's very confusing.
It is.
So, there are five.
There are five.
Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. All right, motion carries. And do you want to take a moment to tell us what's going on with the ECC?
Sure. We are working on a, there's a, Eagle has a community energy management grant that opens in October, so that's $15,000 towards building a sustainability master plan that we were applying for. We're also working on, over the last few years, we've had several native plant sales that have supplied the commission with a budget that we can use to help encourage protecting pollinators and native gardens in our city. And so, we're going to be launching a mini grant that people can apply for to support planting a native garden on their property in the city, so helping guide and fund some of that. We're also getting ready to, our seed library continues to live in the library. The library is closed at the moment, but that will relaunch when the library reopens. And we're working on our native plant sale for this spring, getting that on the calendar. We're also finalizing dates and times and locations for a native plant educational program that we're going to be offering for free.
Thank you. Next up is Historical Commission. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we reappoint Margene Scott to the term ending 2/28/2026, and then we appoint new member Robert Koneski to the term ending 2/28/2026.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And Mr. Bliss, can you take a moment and tell us what's going on with the Historical Commission?
Yeah, yeah, really short, kind of three areas. The first is recognizing and hopefully inspiring people based on the incredible people who helped build this city. We have parks and rooms named after people, and nobody knows why. So, we're creating some signs based on that. And then at the last meeting on council, we adopted the recommendation of the Historical Commission, and we've subsequently named, or well, we have to have formal ceremonies for it, but we are naming either areas of parks or buildings, or a park after three former members of council who did incredible work for the city. So, the Pavilion at Monroe Park will be named after former councilman Bob Gettings. The children's room at the library will be named after former councilman Bob Corbett. And then Ambassador Park, once the renovation is done, will be named after former councilmember, former mayor, and current county commissioner Gary McGilvery. And so, a lot of it is really trying to showcase what works all of these people did. So hopefully, we can inspire the next generation of people to do the same thing. We are also undergoing a project that Councilman Fleming is leading with the Historical Commission, which is taking, cataloging, and digitizing all of our physical records, which is a huge undertaking. If you've seen even just the Historical Museum, let alone everything else that exists, but we've had two floods down there. I think a third one will probably come at some point, so we need to make sure that we get that done, and that's a big effort from the Historical Commission. And finally, it's just to get people to know that the museum exists and find ways that people can engage with the Historical Museum, even if they don't physically go there, or really getting people to go there too. So, lots of, lots of good things on the horizon with Historical.
All right, thank you. Next up, the Human Relations and Equity Commission. Councilor Warbach, any questions?
Sure. I would like to appoint Sayed Murtaza to a regular term ending August 3rd, 2025.
Then this application just came in today. That's why council didn't hand it in.
All right, so just one?
Just the one.
Okay. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
No question with the applicant, but should we consider reducing the board, or do we think more people are going to come?
I think more people will come. There were several that, you know, in discussion, I was expecting, I thought they were in there, and they weren't. They hadn't hit the bid or something, so.
I just had that too.
Yeah, so we had, so I'd like to reserve the right to come back to this if they're able to do that before August, but, you know, we have that option. But I know there are several people that are interested, just not, hadn't gotten their paperwork in line.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I do that? We kind of just did that too when we eliminated the.
We kind of just did that, too, when we eliminated the board, educate, board of education ceases being voting members.
Yes.
So we, they don't count towards quorum anymore.
Correct.
So we can still hit quorum.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. All right, and Counselor Warburg, do you want to take this moment and tell us what's going on with the ECC?
Sure. So right now, the ECC is working on a couple of different projects. One is a monthly book club that is continuing on. In 2022, I have statistics I can share with you, but in 2022, we had one, two, three, four, five, six books that were put onto the, into our Diverse Voices Book Club and were promoted. And across platforms, either in print, or on CD, or audiobook, those, those titles were checked out 365 times. I think that's a wonderful, a wonderful way for us to see that, that, you know, we've had 365 people that have said, not only like, oh, interesting, you know, but they've picked up those books, they've read them, they digested them, and they've been able to, you know, come in contact with different cultures, different, different types of ways of life. We are continuing that Diverse Voices Book Club for the, for the coming year, so that's continuing. Some really good ones on the docket for this year. And we're also expanding that out to a children's storytime that's going to be traveling around because our library is closed at the moment, so it's going to be traveling around to different locations for our Wednesday mornings. Oh, and Allison, I can't remember the exact date, but the, it's on the last Wednesday of the month, I think. I have to double check, I apologize. The last Monday of the month, every month, there's going to be a child storytime that's going to be looking at different cultures and viewpoints. And so the month of February, we're doing Black History Month, and it's a local black author that is going to be reading her book in, at that storytime. So it's going to be some really great activities going forward, and I know that everybody on council had an opportunity to sign up to be one of the presenters, the people who reads those books at those storytimes. So those are coming. We're also continuing to look out for different diversity points and experiences that need to be brought up to council and to the city for issues of equity and inclusion. We are also preparing a, we're preparing to create a cookbook that everybody from the city can contribute to, and we really want to celebrate the many cultures and many people, different viewpoints from across the city of Madison Heights that we can present, put it all in one, you know, maybe soft cover, but one actual physical book that people can take home and celebrate their food cultures from across the city. So there's several other things. Oh, the last one is, we're working with the, with the Arts Board. Our ECC is really interested in doing a lot of collaborations, working with the Arts Board to put on the Americans with Disabilities Act Pride Month, a special project with the Michigan Statewide Independent Living Council to encourage people with disabilities to participate and submit arts that can be displayed here in our city and participate in, invite the entire city to participate in a collaborative art project.
All right, thank you. Next up, Information Technology and Advisory Committee. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we reappoint Brian Davis to the term ending 2/28/2026.
All right, is there support?
Your Honor? All support.
Thank you. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And Mr. Bliss, is there any kind of an update from ITech?
Yeah, yeah, it's not the, it's not the sexiest board. When we talk about like Arts Board, or Historical, all these things, it's like, yeah, I connect with that. ITech is, is a bunch of technology nerds with acronyms after their name on LinkedIn. But a lot of what, a lot of what the, what ITech has done over the past year and will continue to do is trying to improve our cybersecurity posture for the city. There have been a couple of recent hacks that have shut down entire communities. I recently forwarded one of the articles about it to our city manager, and those are the types of things that ITech discusses in detail. And we've improved a lot of the posture and the policy around it, as well as the technology on the backend, even moving our city to the cloud to have it a little bit safer and better protected. But yeah, there's still a lot of work to do, and none of it's going to, going to make headlines in the newspaper. It doesn't sound as good as like a music festival, but it's really important stuff, and I'm proud of the work that they do. Or that we do.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, so this is a mayor's appointment. I know we've had some issues with attendance. I just, I think, I think there was quorum was made at the last meeting. So I was going to appoint Jason Theodoroff.
Theodoroff.
Theodoroff?
That.
Okay. So can someone please make the mayor's appointment of Jason Theodoroff?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that council concurs with the mayor's appointment of Jason Theodore, Theodoroff to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
For a term ending February 2025.
Yeah.
All right, is there support?
Your Honor?
Your Honor?
We all want to support her.
Three different people.
You pick.
All support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. All right, and Counselor Warburg, can you give us an update on what's going on with Parks and Rec?
Yeah, lots of conversations in Parks and Rec meetings about the updates to our parks. We're having a ton of new play structures that have been installed at various parks. Also, a lot of conversation about the light poles, the lighting for, what are they called? Baseball fields, thank you. The light poles for the baseball fields that need, need replacement. And the, the work that is going under, continuing with the growth of our recreation programs, they're growing exponentially. The Parks and Recreation Board also talks and works with the DPS Department on roads, on trees, on feels like a myriad of other types of things that come under the jurisdiction or conversation during those, during those meetings. And so, you know, it's all ongoing and excellent work by the DPS.
All right, thank you. So, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know if this is where I can say something, but.
Yeah, please, this is a discussion, if you have questions about this.
Um, on January 29th, myself, along with probably a few other people on council, received an email from Mary Bush, who is a member of the Parks and Recs Board, and she was enraged that there had been no council representative present for the January 19th meeting. And as the alternate council representative, I was not informed by Councilor Warburg back and that she wouldn't be there. In fact, since joining council in April, Councilor Warback has not attended any Parks and Recs meetings. She has not informed me that she was going to be, not be there for those meetings. In fact, one of the meetings, she contacted Councilor Wright and asked Councilor Wright to sit in on that meeting in her place.
Your Honor, I, I think that this is incorrect information that is being shared right now, and I would like you to.
Okay, well, hold on, hold on. This is actually, this is, we're talking about what's going on with Parks and Rec. Well, we're talking with all the boards, but right now, we're talking about what's going on with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Yeah. And this.
Councilwoman Erin is the alternate, and it's a concern if the representative isn't showing up. So just let her, please let her finish, and then absolutely you will be able to have your say as well.
Okay. And actually, because of her, one of her not being able to attend, we did not meet quorum one meeting, of course, others, but I understand that, that things happen, but if Councilor Warburg could not back, I'm sorry, could not attend the meetings, I was under the impression that the chairperson or the council representative will contact the alternate to let them know this, so representation can be made at those meetings. And without me being notified that she wasn't going to be, there was four meetings, and she has not been to none of them. So I just need to know if that's a point of clarification, if the alternate, I mean, if the representative should contact the alternate or not.
Okay, so on that point, I can say that, yes, if you're a representative and you're not going to make it, you should be reaching out to your alternate, but Counselor Warburg?
Your Honor, could I just have a point of clarification? I never sat in on the Parks and Recs meeting. I sat in on the informational group for the Oakland County Parks. That wasn't a Parks and Recs meeting.
Your Honor?
Yes, okay.
I did miss two meetings. One was a work-related issue, and I could not make it to that meeting, and I apologize for that. And the second one, this last one on the 19th, I missed it, and I don't know how I missed it. It was a mistake in my calendar, and I did not intend to miss that meeting. I had three other meetings with different commissions and boards that week, and I did them all happily because I love serving the city. And it was a, an oversight on my part, and I'm not going to try and give excuses about it, it was an oversight. And I felt terrible. I went up to, I came up to Cory as soon as I figured out that I had missed that meeting, and I said, I'm so sorry, what can I do? How can I fix this? So I want to be clear that when I joined council, one of my main concerns and issues for this council was to, to be a part of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I joined that board as a citizen before I joined council. And it's always been one of my biggest concerns for the city, is making sure we're having good investments in there. So I have missed a couple of meetings. It has not been, like, no meetings whatsoever, have been at, I have been at several meetings, I've been at meetings that you have not attended, I have been at meetings, and the one time that I called Council Wright to attend a different meeting, it was not for Parks and Recreation.
But you were representing, you were the council representative.
That was not the intention. There was, we had several conversations with the city manager about who should attend a particular meeting. There were two meetings happening at the same time. One was a Parks and Rec meeting, and one was the informational meeting regarding the Red Oaks Golf Course. So if we're going to go into like, well, you were at this meeting and you weren't at this meeting, I would like to not do that here. I think that's not the time and place for it. I apologize for missing the meetings that I have, but Parks and Recreation continues to be as apparent of three small children that use the parks on a regular basis. It continues to be a very important board that I intend to want to continue to, to serve.
Okay, so a couple of things here. The work plan for Parks and Recreation didn't happen. Someone correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was there was no quorum.
Correct.
For that.
Correct.
And I, I have not looked at your attendance, so I can't comment on that, but it, I mean, it's easy enough to check.
Yeah.
So if Councilwoman Erin has incorrect information, and they have, and you haven't missed all the meetings, I don't, I don't know, but I do know that we really, if you're missing a meeting, you need to let the alternate know. That's the whole point of having an alternate. And if you're being asked to do something as a representative of a certain board, making sure that your alternate is aware.
Your Honor? It's important. I'll also note that when I was the alternate on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for, for some time, both Councilman Corbett and I were on that board at the same time, and we would both attend most of the meetings as often as we could. It helps to be, whether or not you're the primary or the alternate, helps to be in, present as much as possible, just so you know what's going on. And again, I apologize. Life happens sometimes, we make mistakes. But it is, never has ever been my intention to intentionally miss or not inform you of those things as they go forward.
And Your Honor?
Yes.
Although she say, I have been at every meeting, and those meetings that I have attended, she was not there. So, I mean, and I do understand, as I said, life does happen. You're a mother, I'm a mother. And if you're, maybe we can make a motion that I can become the, the council person representative, and Councilor Warback can be the alternate if her schedule is so heavy that she can't attend the four meetings.
Your Honor? Well, if, if Councilor Warback would, would like to make that motion, I think it would be the best if that's.
Your Honor, I do not want to make that motion. And we're not doing appointments to council positions right now. That's not what's on the table, right? That's not what's on our agenda for the thing.
No, we're reviewing the boards. I mean, we're reviewing with the.
Well, we're doing boards and commission appointments for citizens, correct?
So it's, you plan on being the upcoming?
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to have quorum because it wasn't just your attendance, it's the attendance of all of the members. There seems to be a large concern with this, there was no work plan done.
The work plan, I'll note that the work plan took a very long time to get it done, and it wasn't only quarums, it wasn't only, there were several things that were happening along the way that it took a long time to get it done, yeah.
So there is, okay, did we receive a work plan? I don't think we've ever received, we've never received a work plan.
I missed the January meeting.
Okay, but they were due in December.
I know.
The meeting in December.
But we only have, we reduced the meeting, number of meetings for the Parks and Rec Board from monthly to quarterly, to bimonthly.
They were bimonthly.
From bimonthly to quarterly. So we reduced the number of meetings. So if one meeting gets missed, then it's, you know, it takes that much longer to, to come up with the next time for everybody to get together.
All right. I know that when we had a conversation with, with the work plans, there was a comment made that there were a lot of people who were missing the meetings. And so it's a concern, I mean, when our, when our residents miss the meetings, we say, if you miss, I think it's three meetings, we ask you to leave the board. So.
Your Honor? Your Honor?
I think that, I think we just need to be cognizant of what's happening with attendance and making sure that we're showing up. I also, I'm wondering, I mean, this, I know that we, I mean, we have a lot of boards, staff is involved in all of the boards to some degree, and if staff is the one who's doing everything with the Parks and Rec, I don't know that we need to keep this board. Like, if it's just, if it's a lot of work for everyone, not just council, but for the residents as well, to be coming to the meetings, if staff is doing everything, I'm not really sure if we need to keep this board. So it's something to maybe keep in mind to see what's happening.
Your Honor, I think that, I think it's an important board. I'll say that one of my first meetings way back, I don't remember what year it was, 2017, one of my first meeting with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the question was, all right, can we, we need to replace the fence on, at the 12 Sherry Park. It was mangled and looking terrible, okay? And so the conversation was, can, we're just, we're thinking about taking it down, and then when we have the funding, we will put it, a new one up, right? And at that meeting, you know, at that time in 2017, I had twin, four-year-olds that were so fast, they could get over the fence very quickly. And I was able to say at that time, that, that's a really bad idea, and I think that's important for.
When you were resident, you had input. I understand that. So, right? This is what.
Am I finished, can I finish my sentence?
I think, I think we need to move on.
But can I finish my sentence, Your Honor?
Finish the sentence, and then we need to move on.
Okay. It is important for, for residents to have continual input into that board. I don't think it's an appropriate discussion to say we should eliminate that board.
Okay, and that, that's fine. I'm, I'm saying this because back when I was on the Parks and Rec Board, before I was on council, the meetings were every other month, and a lot of them were canceled. I would get calls saying they were canceled because we didn't have quorum. And so it is a concern to me when this is happening still, when they're only four times a year, and it's a concern to me when I'm hearing that council members aren't there. So just want everyone to think about this and see if we need to revisit it at some point.
Your Honor?
Next, yes?
Sorry, just to.
I think we need to move on.
Yeah, this, this, this has gone a long time. I really wanted to see what the board wants to do with the strategic plan. So if we could ensure that they have a meeting next month, and we can discuss the strategic plan and vote on that, that would be my ask. I, I don't want to make a formal motion or anything, but if they could call a meeting of the Parks and Rec Board and give us a strategic plan, I think that solves a lot of the discussion here.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, it was due in December, so it would be great if we could see it. I'm fine with that. Moving on, next up is Planning, Planning Commission. At this point, I am not making any, any appointments to the Planning Commission, so we'll move to the Tax Board of Review. And can I just get a motion from council? This isn't, there are no council appointments for this one.
Your Honor.
Yes?
I move that we appoint, uh, I think they're all the same dates, so I'll just read off the names. Marilyn Mail, Barbara Castle, Elizabeth Shields, and Tyler Hemmingson. Uh, reappoint them to the Tax Board of Review with a seat that expires 2/28/2025.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Oh, Your Honor, I'd, I'd like to amend my motion. I did not see Marie Bessler, uh, and I would just add her name, it's also with the seat 2/28/2025.
All right, thank you. Uh, support.
Support.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then finally, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Linda Corbett and Margaret Meritinet to the, um, seats ending February 2026.
All right. Thank you. Can I get support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Uh, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries. And that is our boards and appointments. Next up, we have 6.2, which was added on this evening.
So the city council is being asked to approve an inter, interlocal agreement with Hazel Park for S1 water services until the city can acquire and employ with that certification. It is pending legal review and we are still negotiating the fee, but I would ask that it not to exceed $2,000 a month.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council? Yes?
I move that we approve the interlocal agreement with Hazel Park for S1 services with a fee that's not to exceed $2,000 a monthly.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes?
I would ask that the maker in support agree to authorize the city manager to sign a agreement on behalf of the city.
All right. Is everyone okay?
So amended.
amended.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes?
Just a quick question for the public. Why did we choose Hazel Park versus another community?
We've partnered with Hazel Park before. They have a S1 on staff and they, they've provided these services to us back in 2015 as well. And they also oftentimes consult with our current water and sewer supervisor, Chris Woodward, so he has a good relationship with Tim Young, who is the person that would be providing these services.
Thank you. Heather, yes?
For the public's sake, uh, what is S1 Services?
I actually will defer that to Cory Almas, who is leaving us. I was saving my comments for the end, but the reason we need these services is this is Cory's last council meeting, so I have to ask him a question.
Yeah, the, um, Your Honor, thank you. The S1 Services is the water designated by the Eagle, uh, the state eagle that requires, it's a requirement that we have an operator in charge that oversees all water distribution in the city. And there's the, you have to have that S1 certification, which I have, um, to hold the position of operator in charge.
All right, thank you. Is there any other, any other discussion regarding this? All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have bid awards purchases. First, we have the purchasing coordinator, Community Development Block Grant for Lawn Services.
In accordance with HUD regulations, the city posted a bid for CDBG-funded lawn services. This was emailed out to 197 vendors, 31 downloaded it, and eight bids were received as a result. Staff and I request that council award this bid for CDB lawn services to the lowest responsible bidder, who is Zimmerman Lawn &amp; Snow, for a one-year contract at a unit rate of $21 per lot for the 2023 mowing season. We would also request that council authorize the city to proceed to the next lowest qualified bidder, who is Michigan Mowers, at a unit price of $28.50 per lot, or Mobile Guru LLC Total Lawn Care, at a unit price of $33 per lot, in the unlikely event that the contract with Zimmerman Lawn &amp; Snow is canceled due to non-performance or other issues.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward the recommendation as read.
All right.
To award the CDBG-funded year services, uh, bidder, um, and again, as read.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Then we have two from the DPS, DPS Director. Uh, first is the 2023 Major and Local Sectional Concrete Repairs.
Major and local sectional concrete program is typically bid on an annual basis. However, this year, due to the continuing increase in the price of concrete materials and labor, contractors are finding themselves unable to extend pricing for more than the initial contract term. Therefore, a bid was prepared and released, six bids were received by the deadline, and one bid was ultimately rejected for insufficient paperwork. Upon review, Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township was the low bid. Delicio has been a longtime concrete contractor for the city and has completed many identical projects for the city of Madison Heights, as well as other municipalities in the area. The pricing received is favorable, given the current market conditions, and is actually lower than the engineering estimates for many of these projects. We would also note that the bid award does not automatically commit the city to any of these projects that were bid, that is pending budget approval process. Based on these facts, staff concurs with the recommendation of our Cindy engineer and recommends that city council award the bid for 2023 construction season, that's fiscal year 2024, for the major local sectional concrete repairs to the lowest responsible bidder, who's Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township, Michigan, for the total project cost of $965,230.90.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I move that we award this bid for the 2023 Major and Local Sectional Concrete Repairs to the lowest responsible bidder, uh, Delicio Contracting, Inc. of Clinton Township, Michigan, for a total project cost of $965,230.90.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, since this is just shy of a million dollars, if staff could go through, uh, why we're choosing Delicio specifically, uh, just a few bullet points would be great.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yeah, Delicio has years and years and years of service to the city of Madison Heights. Uh, they were not low bidder last year on the projects. We're sad to see them go. Um, we're thrilled to have them back. They're a phenomenal contractor. They are great to work with. Their, uh, their workmanship and professionalism is top-notch. Uh, the city's lucky to have them.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then finally, from the DPS Director, the 2023 R3 Residential Road Projects.
So in January of this year, Ciparone Contracting, who has been doing our R3 road construction programs, informed us that due to the unprecedented increases of the price of concrete materials and labor, that they would not be extending their contract for our R3 projects for this upcoming year. On February the 15th, we, um, received seven bids, were received at City Hall by the deadline. One bid was ultimately rejected for insufficient paperwork. Upon review, again, Delicio Contracting was the lowest bidder. Based on the current trends of cost and availability of materials and labor, staff concurs with the recommendation of the city engineer and again recommends that city council award the bid for the 2023 R3 residential road projects to the lowest responsible bidder, who is Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township, for a total project amount of $1,633,871.56.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes?
Wish I could have included this in my last motion, but we'll go again. Uh, I move that we award the bid for the 2023 R3 residential road projects to the lowest responsible bidder, Delicio Contracting, Inc. of Clinton Township, Michigan, for a total project cost of 1.6 million, 330, or 33,871.56.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Real quick, um, if you could, sir? The R3 road construction program, is that, um, would that be south of John R on the main road? Would that, that be one of the areas or no?
No, no, no. Uh, the R projects are residential road projects, so that would include all the side streets that we've got slated, uh, this year, which is south of 11 Mile, west of John R. Uh, there's about four or five roads in through there that's, uh, that's getting repaved this year.
Okay, all right.
Do you have any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. All right, uh, that concludes our regular business. Um, we are going to go into closed session, but before we do that, I'm going to invite, um, comment from council. Closing comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have any comments, just congratulations to Jennifer Ramirez and the Hater family. Your artwork and your skeleton really is a joy to see, so thank you for representing us.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor, uh, can we get a round of applause for the Hater family children? Seriously, all our.
That's true this whole, whole night. Good job! There. Very proud.
Like, I know this is riveting stuff, um, but you'd probably rather watch like a five-minute YouTube video than this, so appreciate you hanging in there. Uh, I also want to formally request a skeleton versus sharks mashup. Um, I'm thinking like Nightmare before Sharknado. I don't know, just throwing it out there. We're workshopping it right now. Um, no, honestly, I really appreciate the, the public art and the fact that it comes without asking. You know, we, uh, when I created the Arts Board, gosh, now like five years and some change ago, that really wasn't, uh, we were trying to inspire that in our community and it's so cool to see it not coming from anything formal. This is just residents wanting to make the city a little bit more beautiful and a lot more interesting, so, uh, I'm excited about that and I'm super thankful. Um, 10/25 International Artist Day, now Jennifer Ramirez Day this year. I'm looking forward to the Halloween fence. That's gonna be fun. I don't live far, I will be there. Um, Cory Almas, uh, you're amazing. I've enjoyed working with you. I'm sad to see you go. Honestly, though, uh, my favorite memory is the, uh, multiple, uh, debates that we've had about splash pads in the city that led to our creative solution of putting aside that special projects fund, which I know is gonna benefit the city going forward. So I appreciate your, your call and mine, the knowledge, uh, and insights you have about the city and, uh, your creativity. Uh, you will certainly be missed, sir. Um, as a reminder, uh, in case you haven't heard, uh, we have many, many great boards and commissions to join. Um, anybody here listening and you're like, "Oh, you know, that sounds like something fun." Like, I'd like to be on the Envirovenceal Board. I'd like to be a part of the Arts Board. Uh, like, any of that stuff, like, join, please, join. Uh, we need new ideas, uh, we need excitement. Those boards do not work unless new people join and have exciting ideas and projects that we can put into the city, so please do that. Um, my last point is not as like optimistic, like, I feel like I'm gonna hit at a kind of a low, but, uh, while DTE workers are great and phenomenal, the policy around the DTE monopoly is underwhelming to me. Um, I know there, there are reps, I think Representative Slotkin is one, I know a couple others have mentioned, um, really changing some of the structure and the regulations and the policy. When an event like this happens, absolutely, it's understandable that there's, there's going to be power outages, but what can be done to help, help out our residents during that time? What are the things that can be done for, I mean, the loss of food, when, when, when food costs what it does, I mean, I think I have to like sell a kidney to buy a dozen eggs. Uh, to have it go bad, people on a fixed income, that's, that's incredibly difficult and I feel like people are just kinda left to fend for themselves. And then when restoration times are set, those moved back and forth and back and forth, if anybody had any idea at all. And so I know we've requested it before, we've had DTE in front of us. I'd love for that to happen again, but if not, I sent a couple of strongly worded emails today to, uh, the representatives and government above me who can actually do something on this, uh, and I'd encourage the public and my peers on council to do the same, but hopefully we can get them back because, uh, very underwhelming to me. I appreciate the people working on the crews, but the policy, it's, it's not adequate. So, that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Uh, yeah, to that point, to all of our neighbors who are without power, uh, who went without power for a couple of days, we're with you. Uh, a lot of folks up here, I know, didn't have power and it's not fun, it's not fun throwing out your food, it's not fun realizing just how cold your house can really get in the middle of winter. Uh, but, you know what, we're, as always, we're all in this together, so, um, I wanna remind everyone who's watching and out here and up here too, we're all in this together, so let's always keep that in mind when we talk, when we're around each other, when we think of each other. And also appreciate the reason why we have to lift each other up. For example, uh, this is the end of Black History Month and as it was spoken to earlier, uh, we celebrate it because, not to make a scene, not to be grandiose, but because it's important to acknowledge the history and the past of not just some people, but all of the folks of America. So I salute, uh, uh, you know, Kevin and I salute Michael and the Juneteenth celebration we're doing and the other celebrations we're doing. I know Women's History Month is coming up here. Um, it's important, it's important to recognize the, not only the triumphs of our country, but the hard past. Some of you guys might notice today, um, I might even be breaking protocol, which I, trust me, I'll hear about. I'm wearing this Spartan shirt. Um, a lot of you guys probably don't know, um, I was president of student government at Michigan State University a long time ago now, feels like. I was actually president of student government when 9/11 happened and that was a very hard time to be in leadership. And I can only imagine what it's like on that campus. I recently went back because they had this big, uh, love fest for graduates, they, uh, for students, I'm sorry, because, uh, college is like your second home. It's a, really a small part of your life, but it's really a lot of where you grow up. And so, um, to have something like that happen so close to a community was, uh, it really, it was, it hurt me because, uh, if you know me, you know I bleed green. You know I don't wear this for show. This isn't just an opportunity to boast. I, I love Michigan State. I met my wife at Michigan State. Um, I, I discovered leadership in Michigan State. It means a lot to me and a lot of the people, so, um, I just wanna, to everyone out there, I just wanna remind you, remember to be kind at the end of the day. Like, uh, we, you know, at the end of the day, we're all just doing our best up here and it's not about, you know, who can speak the best or who can brag the most, it's about just take care of each other. And that's really one of the things I just, uh, really wanna transition and, and say about Jennifer Ramirez and her husband. Uh, thank you for sharing her with the city, by the way. the way. And Jennifer was one of the people in the city who was kind to my kids for no reason. My daughter expressed an interest in art, and Jennifer talked to her, even let her paint a little bit, and like, those are the little moments that help to define people and define the city. So I want to encourage everyone here to remember that. The skeletons, the Hater family, what you guys are doing, I've driven past that many a times and be like, that is really cool. And so have my kids, and those little things spread joy and are the things that make our city. So, you know, just remember that we all are going through something. You might not be a Spartan, you might root for that other school, Western, but we all have a past, we all have our own story, and it's cool if it's different. That's what makes this country great, that those stories are different. It's not slighting one to tell another, it's celebrating them all. So, just remember to be kind and, you know, join the board, get involved in what we're doing, and be kind.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, anything for attorneys?
Real quick, Your Honor, first of all, Cory Almas, who's hiding behind the podium over there. I, I want to thank you for your years of service to the city. I wish you all the best in your, in your new, new position, and we're gonna miss you. Secondly, I want to thank everybody for the birthday wishes two weeks ago. It was very nice. It was also Jeff, my brother Jeff's, my niece Stephanie's birthday on the same day as mine. We're birthday pals. So Tim Burns handled the meeting, and unfortunately, the, of course, the birthday celebration was kind of cut short and hit close to home, because one of my kids is getting his MBA at Michigan State and happened to have classes that Monday night, two weeks ago, on campus. So to segue with Counselor Wright's, so it hit very close to home, and to segue with Counselor Wright's comments, when a senseless tragedy like this happens, you know, we're all Spartans. And you, you know our hearts go out to the families of the victims, these promising young people who've lost their lives, and the families of those recovering in the hospital, and you know, we wish them Godspeed and, and hopefully the strength to get through this horrific tragedy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
Well, my thunder was kind of stolen earlier when I announced Cory was leaving, because I was gonna do that during closing comments, but I'll take a moment to publicly wish him well, even though I have also, at the city, we're gonna miss you, and I guess that's about it.
All right.
I want to echo the sentiments of everybody here about Cory. Cory, it's been just a pleasure to work with you over the last several years. I'm always like jazzed, is that the right word? I don't know. But I'm always so jazzed to know that somebody who cares so much about the work of, that the work that they're doing is gonna benefit our, our citizens, is so important to them. And I see it every time I talk to you about, you know, be it a light pole in a park, or a place structure, or the woodwork on a pavilion, or, you know, what's going on in the Recreation Department, or the, the review of the, the streets, and how you drive around and stare at the ground for six hours. And like, every time you talk to me about anything, it just is, it's just wonderful. So thank you so much for investing yourself in our city. We appreciate you, and we're gonna, we're gonna miss you. So, thank you. I also, you know, echo the sentiments of Counselor Wright and everybody here about the, the senseless violence at MSU, and I call on our lawmakers to get off their tuckuses and make some real policy changes. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, congratulations to all the new appointees, to all our boards and commissions, and to congratulations to the Hater family, and also Jennifer Ramirez, and congratulations on your retirement, Cory Almas out back there. So, that's it.
Councilwoman Saltis?
No, not tonight.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I've got a couple of things. First of all, Cory Almas, thank you for everything that you've done. I wish you luck with everything that you're doing. I saw him in the hall the other day, and I said, I'm sad for us, but I'm happy for you. So I do wish you luck with, with everything. So I have high schoolers, and the other night, my daughter came out of her room, she was messaging somebody at MSU, and she told me what happened. And I mean, I just, I'm of that age, my kids are of that age, my friends' kids are of that age, and just, you know, everyone who had kids there were going, they were picking them up, and they were picking up kids who were from out of state who couldn't go home. So, I want to thank everyone who has done that, who has opened their homes to, to these kids. As a parent, I can't think of anything more terrifying than to find out that this was happening, and your child was there, and you couldn't do anything. And then to know that because your child was, you know, too far away for you to go and pick up. So I want to thank all the families that opened their doors to these MSU students, and know that many of us are thinking of you. I also want to thank everyone who opened their doors and their freezers and their generators and their heat to people who had no power. There are people in the city who haven't had power since Wednesday, who, who aren't gonna have power until potentially tomorrow or Wednesday. I received a call today from someone who said that they were no longer on the outage map, but they didn't have power, and there were three blocks that were in this situation, and that they had a DTE pool there, it was in somebody's backyard, it was just lying there. So I reached out to my contact at DTE, who said that they were dealing with some other hazards, but an hour, maybe two hours later, got back to me and said, okay, we're on that now. And I can see that this, this specific is still on the map, but it sounds like there were a lot of glitches with that. So if you ever lose power, and for whatever reason, your house is not showing up as being out of power, contact DTE, and I guess if it doesn't work, you can contact me and I'll reach out to my contact, because that's just, it's just adding to everything out there. I want to thank the haters and Mrs. Ramirez for bringing the art to the city. As I said earlier, you know, both of you became destinations for me, and we'll see what happens this year with construction. If everyone's gonna be on Gardenia again, you might be getting more traffic, you might have to put deceased up before, before October. And to Kevin and Michael, thank you for, for coming and speaking to us tonight about the Juneteenth event. I have it in my calendar. I've had it since you messaged me maybe a month ago. I've already talked to Michael about it. Really appreciate that you're bringing that to the city and that you're bringing it back. We do appreciate everything you do. We are going to go into closed session in a moment, but I am going to need someone to make that motion, please.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Motion to go into closed session.
Two, for the purpose of going into closed session is to discuss pending litigation, Sayers versus Madison Heights.
Make a motion to go into closed session to discuss ongoing litigation, Sayers versus Madison Heights.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote to go into closed session?
Mayor from Kansas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Councilor Rohrab?
Yes.
Councilwoman Saltis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright?
Yes.
Councilwoman Aaron?
Yes.
Mayor Grayston?
All right, I vote yes. We are in recess while we go to closed session. The time is nine o'clock. Thank you.